In a system built to silence him, one teacher refused to be erased. Alex Rivera was respected by students and colleagues alike. His advanced literature class had the highest success rates in the district, but when a new principal arrived, everything changed. Classroom disruptions, curriculum challenges, false accusations, clear your desk now or security will escort you out. What Principal Whitfield didn ' t realize, Alex documented everything, every meeting, every directive. Every witness. When they tried to destroy his career, his meticulous evidence became their undoing. One teacher ' s systematic resistance transformed into a movement that changed an entire school system. From targeted educator to school board president, Alex Rivera ' s journey proves that justice doesn ' t require confrontation, it demands documentation. Witness the power of strategic resistance in this compelling true to life story about standing firm against discrimination. Do you believe detailed documentation is the key to fighting injustice? Share your thoughts in the comments below and subscribe for more stories of systematic change triumphing over prejudice. Alex Rivera adjusted his tie in the reflection of his classroom window as the early morning sunlight streamed through the blinds. At thirty four, he had dedicated eight years to teaching advanced literature at Westridge High School, building a reputation for connecting with even the most challenging students. On his desk sat a framed photo of himself with his husband Ethan at their wedding three years ago small but visible, a quiet statement of his identity. The bell rang signaling the start of another school day. Alex checked his watch seven forty five A M exactly. Punctuality was one of many qualities that had earned him Teacher of the Year twice in his tenure. Good morning Mister Rivera, called Melissa as she entered, the first of his A P literature students to arrive. Morning Melissa. Ready for our discussion on Whitman today? Alex smiled, arranging the discussion materials on the central table. His teaching style was collaborative, desks arranged in circles rather than rows, encouraging dialogue rather than lecture. As students filled the classroom, Principal Thomas Whitfield appeared in the doorway. Tall with thinning blonde hair and perpetually pursed lips, Whitfield had arrived at Westridge six months ago following the retirement of the previous principal. His arrival had coincided with subtle but noticeable changes in school policy, traditional values mentioned frequently in staff meetings, certain books quietly removed from reading lists. Mister Rivera a word after class, his tone suggested it wasn ' t a request, Alex nodded. Of course sir. The classroom discussion flowed brilliantly, students engaged deeply with Whitman ' s themes of identity and self celebration in Song of Myself. When Madison connected the poet ' s struggle for authentic expression to modern L G B T Q plus voices, Alex facilitated the conversation with his characteristic balance, neither steering toward nor away from the topic, simply allowing the academic discourse to develop organically. Excellent insights everyone, Alex concluded as the bell rang. For Thursday please complete your comparative essays on Whitman and Dickinson. As students filed out, Whitfield stepped in closing the door behind him. Alex noticed the principal ' s eyes dart to the wedding fode on his desk, a momentary tightening of his jawline. Mister Rivera there have been some concerns about your curriculum choices. Alex maintained his professional composure. Concerns sir were following the district approved A P literature syllabus. These texts have been part of the curriculum for years, Whitfield ' s fingers drummed against his crossed arms. Parents have expressed discomfort with some of the themes being discussed, particularly regarding certain lifestyle choices. The coded language wasn ' t subtle, Alex had heard similar phrasing throughout his teaching career. Principal Whitfield were analyzing canonical works of American literature, the discussions are student led and academically rigorous. Alex kept his voice measured, aware that this conversation was likely the first of many. I ' d be happy to review any specific concerns with the curriculum committee. That won ' t be necessary, Whitfield replied curtly, just be mindful that your personal situation shouldn ' t influence classroom discussions. Alex felt the familiar knot in his stomach, the one that formed whenever his professional capabilities were undermined due to his identity. He ' d experienced various forms of this conversation before but never from a direct superior with such obvious disdain. My teaching is focused on literary analysis and critical thinking sir, my personal life remains personal. Alex maintained steady eye contact refusing to be diminished. See that it stays that way. Whitfield turned to leave then paused. Oh and I ' ll be conducting more frequent classroom observations, standard procedure for all teachers. After Whitfield left, Alex sat at his desk, methodically documenting the interaction in a journal he ' d started keeping since noticing the shift in administrative attitude. Time nine zero seven A M, date October twelfth, verbatim quotes included. His phone buzzed with a text from Ethan, dinner with mom tonight she ' s in town for the conference. The normalcy of the message centered him. He had built a good life, respected career, loving relationship, financial stability after years of careful planning. At thirty four he had overcome previous challenges including being disowned by his father at nineteen when he came out. His mother ' s unwavering support had helped him through college and teaching certification. During lunch, Department Chair Diane Lawson stopped by his classroom. Alex I noticed Whitfield coming out of your room earlier, everything okay? Alex considered his response carefully, just discussing curriculum nothing specific. Diane ' s expression suggested she understood more than his words conveyed. At fifty eight she had been at Westridge for decades and had seen administrations come and go. Well for what it ' s worth your teaching evaluations are stellar, students specifically request your sections. She placed a folder on his desk. I ' ve documented all peer reviews and student feedback from the past three years in here, just. For your records. Their eyes met briefly and understanding passing between them, she was offering evidence documentation of his teaching excellence. Thank you Diane I appreciate thoroughness in recordkeeping. That afternoon as Alex supervised study hall he noticed Whitfield observing him through the library window not entering just watching. When their eyes met, the principal didn ' t look away or acknowledge being seen. Instead he made a note on his clipboard before walking away. Later in the teacher ' s lounge conversations quieted when Alex entered. Science teacher Robert Chen made space for him at the table. Heard Whitfield ' s doing random observations, Robert said making air quotes. Apparently, Alex kept his tone neutral. Strange how some teachers seem to get more random visits than others, remarked Emily from math. Alex prepared for his final class of the day, aware that the subtle discrimination was beginning to emerge from microaggressions into something more concrete. He would need to be strategic, documenting everything while maintaining his professional standards. As students worked on their in class assignments, Alex made his own notes planning his approach. He would continue teaching with excellence, follow every protocol meticulously, and create an unassailable record of his professional conduct. When the final bell rang, Alex gathered his materials noticing a new memo in his faculty mailbox. Mandatory review of teaching materials for sensitive content, submit all reading assignments for administrative approval. The policy was new, and conspicuously timed. Alex carefully folded the memo and placed it in his documentation folder. The systematic approach had begun. So would his resistance, not through confrontation but through excellence, documentation and unwavering professionalism. Leaving the building, Alex spotted Whitfield watching from his office window. He nodded politely and continued walking, his posture straight, his resolve strengthening with each step. Over the following weeks, Alex Rivera meticulously documented a pattern of escalating administrative interference. Each incident on its own might have seemed minor, schedule changes, classroom relocations, additional paperwork requirements, but collectively they painted a concerning picture. On November third at ten seventeen A M, Principal Whitfield entered Alex ' s classroom unannounced during a critical discussion of Toni Morrison ' s The Bluest Eye. The timing couldn ' t have been worse. Students were analyzing the novel ' s exploration of identity and societal standards. Mister Rivera I need all students to report to the auditorium immediately, Whitfield announced, interrupting Madison ' s thoughtful analysis. Sir we weren ' t notified of an assembly, Alex replied checking his calendar for confirmation. Last minute arrangement, anti drug presentation. Whitfield ' s tone left no room for discussion. As students filed out, confused by the disruption, Alex noticed Robert Chen ' s class across the hall continuing undisturbed. This marked the fourth interrupted lesson in two weeks, all during discussions of literature addressing identity or social justice. By ten forty two A M, Alex confirmed with Administrative Assistant Janice Wilson that no assembly had been scheduled. When students returned at eleven zero five A M they reported being held in the cafeteria for forty five minutes without any presentation. Mister Rivera this is getting weird, whispered Carmen, one of his senior students. Principal Whitfield just had us sitting there then dismissed us when the period was almost over. That afternoon the English department meeting brought new tensions. Whitfield introduced revised curriculum guidelines requiring family friendly literature selections. We must ensure all materials reflect community standards, Whitfield explained, his gaze lingering on Alex. Some teachers may need to adjust their reading lists accordingly. Diane Lawson raised her hand. These proposed changes conflict with the district approved A P curriculum. Modifying required texts could jeopardize our students ' college credit eligibility. Exceptions can be made for A P courses, Whitfield conceded reluctantly, but all supplementary materials must receive prior approval. After the meeting, Alex filed the new guidelines in his documentation folder, noting the targeted implementation and inconsistent application across departments. On November tenth things escalated dramatically. As Alex distributed copies of Harvey Milk ' s speech, The Hope Speech, as a rhetorical analysis exercise, Principal Whitfield appeared at his door. Mister Rivera my office, now. His voice was tight face flushed with barely contained anger. I am in the middle of class sir, Alex responded calmly. Perhaps after the period ends. This cannot wait, Whitfield insisted loud enough for students to exchange uncomfortable glances. Alex maintained his composure. Students please continue with the rhetorical analysis framework on page forty seven, I ' ll return shortly. In Whitfield ' s office the principal slammed a copy of the speech onto his desk. This is exactly the type of inappropriate material I ' ve warned you about. Sir this speech is part of the approved rhetorical analysis unit. It studied for its persuasive techniques alongside Martin Luther King J R S I Have a Dream and Kennedy ' s inaugural address. This isn ' t about rhetoric, Whitfield snapped. This is about pushing your agenda on impressionable students. Alex felt his heartbeat accelerate but kept his voice steady. With respect, Principal Whitfield analyzing historical speeches isn ' t an agenda. The curriculum was approved by the district and school board. Not anymore, Whitfield declared sliding a letter across his desk. Effective immediately you ' re being placed on administrative leave pending review of curriculum violations. Alex read the document carefully. These allegations are completely unfounded. I followed every district policy and professional standard. Your personnel file now includes reports of inappropriate discussions and materials. Parents have complained. Which parents what specific complaints, Alex asked noticing the letter contained no details only vague accusations. That ' s confidential, Whitfield replied. Clear your classroom by the end of the day, we ' ll assign a substitute for your classes. As Alex returned to his classroom, students immediately sensed something was wrong. He maintained his professional demeanor completing the lesson despite the churning in his stomach. During his planning period Alex contacted the teachers union representative Sarah Martinez. This is textbook discrimination Alex, Sarah said after reviewing his documentation. They can ' t place you on leave without specific violations or due process. Everything I ' ve taught is district approved, Alex confirmed. Document everything from today. Don ' t clear out your classroom yet that acknowledges the validity of the leave, I ' ll file an immediate grievance. News traveled quickly. By lunch several teachers had texted their support. Diane Lawson appeared at his classroom. This is unconscionable, she said closing the door behind her. The department stands with you, we ' ve already drafted a letter of support with fourteen signatures. At two thirty P M as final period ended Whitfield arrived with the school security officer. Mister Rivera I instructed you to vacate the premises. Students lingering in the hallway stopped to watch. Alex noticed several recording with their phones, modern witnesses to an ancient form of injustice. Principal Whitfield I ' ve contacted the union regarding procedural violations in this action, Alex stated clearly aware of the growing audience. No specific allegations have been provided and no investigation has occurred. Clear your desk now or security will escort you out, Whitfield demanded voice rising. Student Carmen Bailey stepped forward. Mister Rivera is the best teacher in this school, you can ' t just kick him out for no reason. Return to your class immediately Ms. Bailey, Whitfield ordered. The bell rang, school ' s over, she replied standing her ground. More students gathered their presence a silent testament to Alex ' s impact. Alex addressed the security officer directly. Officer Jenkins I am not refusing to leave, I am requesting proper documentation of allegations before removing personal property or instructional materials that belong to my students. Jenkins looked uncomfortable caught between procedures and obvious injustice. Perhaps we could allow Mister Rivera to document his belongings first, Whitfield ' s face reddened further. Fine you have thirty minutes Jenkins will supervise. As Whitfield stormed away, Alex noticed Robert Chen and Emily Winters observing from their classrooms, witnesses to the escalation. While organizing his materials, Alex discovered his personnel file had been accessed multiple times in recent weeks, demonstrated by the digital access log he requested earlier as precaution. Each access coincided with Whitfield ' s arrival at the school. At three fifteen P M Alex left the building escorted by Officer Jenkins who whispered, this isn ' t right Mister Rivera. My daughter says you ' re the only reason she ' s applying to college. Outside Ethan waited in their car concern evident on his face. Several students and parents had gathered having heard about the situation through texts and social media. What happens now, Ethan asked as Alex got in. Alex placed his documentation folder on the dashboard nearly forty pages of dated detailed records. Now we follow proper channels, he replied his voice steady despite the day ' s humiliation. Everything that happened today was witnessed and recorded. Whitfield made his move publicly emotionally. We ' ll respond strategically legally. As they drove away Alex glanced at his phone messages of support from colleagues parents and students already filling his inbox. The breaking point had arrived but not in the way Whitfield had intended. The real battle was just beginning. Within forty eight hours of being placed on administrative leave, Alex Rivera initiated a systematic approach to building his case. Working from his home office he organized all documentation chronologically in both physical and digital formats creating multiple secure backups. On November twelfth at nine thirty A M Alex met with Sarah Martinez, the teachers union representative to formalize their strategy. The district has ten business days to provide specific allegations, Sarah explained reviewing the collective bargaining agreement. Your documentation is impressively thorough. I ' ve rarely seen such meticulous recordkeeping. Alex accessed his digital calendar. I started documenting the day Whitfield arrived. The pattern became evident within his first month. They created a shared spreadsheet tracking all incidents with timestamps witnesses and supporting evidence. The structure included. One date time of incident. Two nature of incident. Three witnesses present. Four related documentation. Five deviation from standard procedures. Six comparable treatment of non L G B T Q plus faculty. Sarah nodded approvingly. This systematic approach strengthens our position considerably. At two fifteen P M Alex received an email from Diane Lawson containing statements from seventeen faculty members documenting disparate treatment. Robert Chen ' s statement included detailed observations of Whitfield ' s classroom observation patterns. Fourteen visits to Alex ' s classroom over six weeks compared to an average of two point three visits to other faculty. Mister Rivera consistently demonstrates exemplary teaching methodology and subject mastery, wrote Emily Winters in her statement. The administrative scrutiny appears targeted and unrelated to performance metrics. On November fourteenth Alex met with education attorney Megan Taylor, recommended by the union. Your case presents clear evidence of discriminatory treatment, Megan confirmed after reviewing his documentation. The absence of specific allegations in your administrative leave notice violates multiple district policies and potentially state employment laws. They drafted formal requests for. Complete personnel file access. All parent complaints referenced by Whitfield. Documentation of curriculum review procedures. Comparative data on administrative actions toward other faculty. Email communications regarding his case. Establishing a pattern is crucial, Megan advised. We need to demonstrate this isn ' t about curriculum but about your identity. Meanwhile student Carmen Bailey had organized a petition supporting Alex ' s reinstatement, gathering three hundred forty seven signatures from students and parents, nearly forty percent of the school population, within three days. The petition included specific examples of Alex ' s positive impact on educational outcomes. Mister Rivera ' s A P literature class has maintained a ninety four percent passing rate on A P exams over eight years compared to the national average of seventy nine percent, the petition noted citing verifiable data from the college board. On November sixteenth Alex received an unexpected email from Janice Wilson, the administrative assistant. Copy. Mister Rivera. I feel obligated to inform you that I overheard Principal Whitfield discussing your situation with school board member Gregory Phillips on November ninth. He specifically stated, we need to remove the gay teacher before he influences more students with his lifestyle. I ' ve attached the meeting calendar showing they met privately, which violates protocol requiring documentation of all administrator board discussions. This information should be kept confidential as my position would be jeopardized if revealed. Janice Wilson. Alex immediately forwarded this critical evidence to his attorney and union representative, ensuring it ' s secure documentation while protecting Janice ' s identity. By November seventeenth Alex had compiled statements from seven former students who had graduated from his classes and gone on to academic success. Mister Rivera ' s mentorship was instrumental in my acceptance to Columbia ' s English program, wrote former student Jason Rodriguez, now in his second year of college. His classroom was one of the few places where I, as a gay student, felt completely safe and academically challenged. On November eighteenth Alex and Ethan attended a scheduled meeting with Superintendent Doctor Patricia Harris. Ethan a data analyst by profession had created visualizations demonstrating statistical anomalies in Whitfield ' s administrative actions. These graphs show clear disparities in classroom observations curriculum scrutiny and disciplinary actions, Ethan explained displaying a series of charts. The probability of these patterns occurring randomly is less than zero point zero zero three. Doctor Harris reviewed the evidence with increasing concern. Why wasn ' t this brought to my attention earlier? I followed proper channels, Alex explained. All concerns were directed to Principal Whitfield first as per district policy, Doctor Harris made notes in her portfolio. The absence of specific allegations is particularly troubling. Administrative leave requires documented cause. Later that day Alex received an email from the district ' s H R department requesting a formal interview on November twenty first. The email included for the first time specific allegations. One inappropriate curriculum materials not approved by administration. Two discussing personal lifestyle choices with students. Three insubordination regarding administrative directives. Alex and his legal team prepared point by point refutations. One all materials were district approved with documentation dating back three years. Two no evidence of personal discussions, confirmed by classroom recordings and student statements. Three all directives were followed with documented compliance. On November nineteenth three parents from the school community council contacted Alex independently, sharing concerns about Whitfield ' s leadership. Principal Whitfield made concerning comments during the October parent meeting, wrote Council Treasurer Margaret Johnson. When discussing curriculum he referenced keeping certain influences away from students while looking directly at your classroom photo on the wall. Alex ' s investigation revealed that Whitfield had previously resigned from two districts following similar patterns of discriminatory behavior. These districts had settled confidentially, explaining the absence of public records, information Alex obtained through former colleagues at those schools. By November twentieth Alex had assembled a comprehensive evidence portfolio including. Sixty three pages of dated chronological documentation. Twenty seven witness statements from faculty staff students and parents. Statistical analysis demonstrating pattern of disparate treatment. Comparative performance metrics showing teaching excellence. Audio recordings of five interactions with Whitfield, legally obtained in a one party consent state. Curriculum approval documentation predating Whitfield ' s arrival. District policy violations in the administrative leave process. Evidence suggesting coordinated action with specific school board members. That evening local news outlet The Westridge Chronicle published an article, award winning teacher placed on leave under questionable circumstances detailing the growing community concern and student protests. The article carefully avoided mentioning Alex ' s sexual orientation, focusing instead on his teaching record and the procedural irregularities. On November twenty first one hour before the scheduled H R interview, Alex received an unexpected call from board member Lisa Castillo. Mister Rivera I ' ve reviewed your evidence privately, this situation reflects poorly on our district and values. I cannot officially advise you but if I were in your position I would request the superintendent attend your H R interview. Board policy gives you that right under section forty seven point three. When Alex and Megan arrived for the H R interview they were prepared with multiple copies of the evidence portfolio. Before we begin, Alex stated calmly, I request Superintendent Harris ' s presence as permitted under board policy forty seven point three. The H R director looked surprised but made the call. Twenty minutes later Doctor Harris arrived apologizing for the delay. Now Alex said distributing his evidence portfolios, let ' s discuss the actual basis for these actions and the pattern they reveal. The systematic gathering of evidence had transformed what Whitfield intended as a swift removal into a comprehensive case demonstrating discriminatory intent. Each document testimony and data point had been methodically collected and organized, not for confrontation but for an irrefutable presentation of truth. On November twenty third five days after Alex ' s comprehensive presentation to H R and the superintendent, an unexpected email arrived from school board member Lisa Castillo. Mister Rivera. The board has scheduled an emergency executive session for November twenty fifth at seven P M regarding your situation. While I cannot discuss specific deliberations, I believe you should be prepared to present your evidence directly to the full board. I ' ve taken the liberty of reviewing district policies regarding administrative actions against tenured faculty. Policy fifty three point seven specifically requires substantiated documentation of violations before leave implementation. This provision appears to have been overlooked. This information is provided in my capacity as a private citizen concerned with proper governance. Regards. Lisa Castillo. Alex immediately forwarded the message to attorney Megan Taylor, who confirmed the significance of this development. Executive sessions typically indicate serious concern at the board level, Megan explained during their four thirty P M strategy call. Castillo ' s reference to policy fifty three point seven suggests she ' s building a procedural case against Whitfield ' s actions. On November twenty fourth a new ally emerged unexpectedly. Doctor James Peterson, the district ' s curriculum director who had been on medical leave, returned to find the situation unfolding. Principal Whitfield circumvented standard curriculum review protocols, Doctor Peterson noted in his official statement added to Alex ' s case file. All materials in Mister Rivera ' s syllabus received proper approval through channels established in policy twenty seven point three with documentation on file dating back three academic years. That afternoon Alex received a call from Carmen Bailey ' s mother Elizabeth Bailey, a partner at Bailey and Associates law firm specializing in civil rights cases. My daughter has been devastated by your removal, Elizabeth explained. More importantly as an attorney I am troubled by the procedural violations evident in your case. I ' d like to offer my firm ' s resources to supplement your current representation, focusing specifically on the civil rights aspects. The alliance with Bailey and Associates significantly expanded Alex ' s legal support network. By seven P M Elizabeth had connected Alex ' s team with Marcus Johnson, a former Department of Education office for civil rights investigator, who agreed to review the evidence portfolio. This case presents textbook elements of discriminatory practice, Johnson concluded after his assessment. The documentation establishes both disparate treatment and potential hostile work environment claims under title V I I protections. On November twenty fifth at ten fifteen A M local news coverage expanded when The Westridge Chronicle published student testimonials. Mister Rivera never discussed his personal life in class, wrote senior Zach Thompson. He taught us critical thinking and literary analysis. The administration ' s actions seem based on who he is not how he teaches. Parent support organized rapidly. By noon a formal letter signed by one hundred twenty seven parents demanded transparency regarding Whitfield ' s actions. We the undersigned parents of Westridge High School students demand. One full disclosure of evidence supporting administrative action against Mister Rivera. Two explanation of curriculum review procedures implemented by Principal Whitfield. Three statistical data regarding administrative observation patterns across faculty. Four transparency regarding compliance with district nondiscrimination policies. Our children deserve educational excellence free from discriminatory administrative practices. At one thirty P M another key ally emerged when Doctor Elaine Wright, professor of education at State University and advisor to the district ' s curriculum committee, contacted Alex directly. Principal Whitfield ' s actions constitute a dangerous precedent for academic freedom, Doctor Wright stated in her formal assessment. The materials flagged in your case exemplify precisely the critical thinking and diverse perspectives mandated by State Education Standards section four seven three. By three forty five P M community organizations had joined the growing support network. The State Education Association issued a statement condemning the district ' s actions. The apparent targeting of an educator based on personal identity rather than professional performance threatens the foundational principles of our education system. We call for immediate reinstatement pending proper investigation. At five twenty P M just before the board ' s executive session, Alex received perhaps the most surprising support, an email from Officer Jenkins, the security officer who had supervised his classroom clearing. Mister Rivera. I ' ve submitted a formal incident report to H R regarding Principal Whitfield ' s statements preceding your removal. During security briefing on November tenth at eight fifteen A M he instructed me to be prepared to remove the problem teacher before any alleged infractions occurred. This premeditated action violates security protocols requiring documented cause before involvement. My position may be at risk for this disclosure but my oath is to protect all school community members including faculty facing injustice. Officer Michael Jenkins. The executive session lasted three hours. At ten seventeen P M Alex received a call from Superintendent Harris. Mister Rivera the board has reviewed your evidence and found significant procedural violations. While I cannot disclose specific deliberations I am authorized to inform you that an independent investigation has been ordered into both your case and broader administrative practices under Principal Whitfield. Most significantly the superintendent added, the board has voted to lift your administrative leave effective immediately pending investigation results. You ' re expected to resume your teaching duties on Monday. When Alex arrived at school on Monday morning November twenty eighth he found his classroom door decorated with student notes of support and welcome messages. Diane Lawson waited nearby. The department held together your classes exactly as you left them, she explained. We refuse to implement any curriculum changes Whitfield demanded. As students arrived for first period spontaneous applause erupted. Carmen Bailey presented Alex with a formal letter signed by students committed to supporting the ongoing investigation. We pledge to document accurately any future incidents of We pledge to document accurately any future incidents of discriminatory behavior. Our generation understands the power of proper documentation and witness testimony. During lunch, Robert Chen revealed that faculty had organized their own documentation system. While you were gone, seventeen teachers implemented standardized observation logs, Robert explained, showing Alex the shared database. Every interaction with Whitfield is now recorded with timestamp, context, and witness verification. The alliance had expanded beyond individual support to systematic community action. Each new ally brought not only moral support but strategic advantages. Lisa Castillo provided insider knowledge of board procedures and policies. Elizabeth Bailey contributed specialized legal expertise. Doctor Peterson established curriculum compliance verification. Students offered firsthand testimonials and organized documentation. Parents leveraged community pressure through collective action. Educational experts validated professional standards compliance. Officer Jenkins provided critical evidence of premeditation. By the end of that first day back, Alex had integrated these diverse supports into a coordinated strategy. Meeting with his expanded legal team at four thirty P M, he reviewed the investigation parameters. The network of allies we ' ve established transforms this from an individual grievance to a systemic review, Megan noted. Each allied group provides unique leverage within their domain of influence. Elizabeth Bailey added, the multiple documentation streams create redundant verification systems. If one witness faces pressure, others maintain the evidentiary chain. As they finalized their approach, Alex received one final message, an anonymous email from a district employee. The investigation should examine financial records. Principal Whitfield ' s previous districts settled similar cases with nondisclosure agreements. Check Board Member Philip ' s connection to those districts and follow the money. Alex forwarded this lead to Marcus Johnson, who had resources to investigate financial connections discreetly. Building this alliance network has shifted the power dynamic fundamentally, Alex observed. What began as isolated intimidation has catalyzed systematic accountability. The coordinated alliance had transformed not just Alex ' s individual case, but the entire school community ' s approach to administrative accountability. Each ally contributed unique resources, expertise, and witness capacity, creating a comprehensive support structure that no single individual could have established alone. The investigation was just beginning, but the foundation for systemic change had been firmly established. On December fifth, the independent investigation officially commenced under the direction of retired Judge Alina Martinez, appointed by the school board to ensure impartiality. Alex ' s expanded legal team developed a systematic approach to managing the complex proceedings. We ' re implementing a three- pronged strategy, explained Megan Taylor during their preparation meeting. Administrative remedy through district channels, civil rights complaint at the state level, and documentation for potential litigation if necessary. Elizabeth Bailey created a structured evidence matrix categorizing all documentation by type, source, and relevance. Evidence C A T G O R I S. A, direct discriminatory statements, six instances documented. B, procedural violations, fourteen violations identified. C, disparate treatment patterns, statistical evidence, N equals forty seven. D, witness testimonials, thirty-one faculty, fifty-four students, eighteen parents. E, curriculum certification documentation, eight years of approvals. F, performance evaluations, seventeen exemplary ratings. The first formal hearing occurred on December twelfth at the district administration building. Principal Whitfield arrived with attorney Gerald Thompson, known for representing administrators in similar cases across three counties. My client categorically denies any discriminatory intent, Thompson asserted in his opening statement. Administrative actions were based solely on curriculum concerns and insubordination. Alex ' s team methodically dismantled this claim through synchronized presentation of evidence. Marcus Johnson demonstrated the statistical impossibility of Whitfield ' s observation patterns occurring randomly, while Doctor Peterson confirmed all curriculum materials had received proper approval. On December fifteenth, the investigation expanded when three former employees from Whitfield ' s previous districts came forward with strikingly similar experiences. Principal Whitfield specifically targeted me after learning I was gay, stated former teacher David Morales. The pattern was identical, increased observations, curriculum scrutiny, and eventual constructive dismissal. By December twentieth, Judge Martinez had conducted forty-seven interviews and reviewed over three hundred documents. When Whitfield ' s attorney attempted to question Alex ' s teaching methods, student testimonials provided overwhelming counter evidence. Mr. Rivera ' s class prepared me for college level writing better than any other, testified former student Asia Washington, now attending Princeton. His teaching methodology adhered strictly to academic standards while creating an intellectually rigorous environment. The board reconvened on January eighth to review Judge Martinez ' s preliminary findings, which identified substantial evidence suggesting discriminatory patterns and procedural violations. This prompted an unprecedented action. Whitfield was placed on administrative leave pending final investigation results. On January fifteenth, school board member Gregory Phillips resigned abruptly after financial connections between his consulting firm and Whitfield ' s previous districts emerged. Elizabeth Bailey ' s team had uncovered a pattern of settlements and subsequent consulting contracts potentially designed to circumvent disclosure requirements. The district ' s attorney proposed settlement discussions on January twenty second. We ' re prepared to offer reinstatement with back pay, record expungement, and a letter of apology, the attorney stated during mediation. Alex ' s response was resolute. This case isn ' t about personal vindication, it ' s about establishing systemic protections for all faculty members. His counterproposal included: One, implementation of anti- discrimination training for all administrators. Two, establishment of an independent review process for administrative actions. Three, transparent documentation requirements for personnel decisions. Four, regular climate surveys with protected reporting mechanisms. Five, inclusion of L G B T Q plus protections in district policy language. The legal battle culminated on February seventh when Judge Martinez issued her final report, concluding that substantial evidence supports allegations of discriminatory treatment based on sexual orientation, and systematic procedural violations designed to circumvent due process protections. Three days later, the school board voted unanimously to implement all recommended policy changes and accept Alex ' s settlement terms. The resolution included termination of Principal Whitfield ' s contract and mandatory district-wide anti- discrimination training. As Alex left the final hearing, he reflected on how the legal process had transformed from personal defense to systemic reform. Through strategic documentation, alliance building, and procedural persistence, what began as an individual injustice had catalyzed institutional change that would protect countless others in the future. By early March, the ripple effects of Alex Rivera ' s case had expanded well beyond Westridge High School. The school board ' s unanimous implementation of new anti- discrimination policies created a framework for institutional transformation that became a model for neighboring districts. On March third, Alex met with newly appointed interim principal Doctor Vanessa Rodriguez, a veteran educator with extensive experience in inclusive school environments. We ' re implementing a structured policy review process, Doctor Rodriguez explained, sharing a detailed implementation timeline. Phase one focuses on administrative accountability metrics, phase two addresses classroom inclusivity standards, and phase three establishes protected reporting mechanisms. The district ' s new documentation requirements introduced standardized templates for administrative actions. Administrative action record. Date, timestamp, teacher name. Action type dropped on menu. Specific policy reference, required field. Supporting documentation, required attachment. Witness verification, required field. Consistency evaluation, comparison to similar situations. By March fifteenth, the State Education Department had taken notice, sending observers to study Westridge ' s emerging best practices. Deputy Education Commissioner Thomas Wilson attended a faculty meeting to assess the implementation process. What you ' ve established here represents a significant advancement in administrative transparency, Wilson noted. We ' re considering adapting elements of your documentation system for statewide implementation. Alex worked closely with the district ' s newly formed policy review committee, applying his meticulous documentation skills to policy development. The committee established clear guidelines requiring: One, evidence-based administrative decisions with specific policy references. Two, comparative analysis ensuring consistent application across faculty. Three, multiple level review for potentially adverse personnel actions. Four, protected channels for reporting discriminatory practices. Five, regular climate assessment through anonymous faculty surveys. On April seventh, Alex received an unexpected invitation to present at the State Educators Conference. Dear Mister Rivera. Your recent experience has catalyzed important administrative reforms. We invite you to lead a session titled Documentation as Protection, creating accountable administrative systems at the upcoming State Educators Conference. Your systematic approach to evidence gathering and alliance building provides valuable insights for educators navigating similar challenges. Doctor Michelle Zhang. Conference Chair. Meanwhile, Carmen Bailey had expanded student involvement through the newly formed Student Advocacy Alliance, which implemented their own systematic monitoring of school climate. We ' ve developed a secure reporting system allowing students to document concerning patterns, Carmen explained during a presentation to the school board on April twelfth. Reports are anonymized, categorized, and analyzed for potential discrimination indicators. The transformation extended to curriculum development as well. The English Department, led by Diane Lawson, established transparent review protocols. Curriculum Review Protocol. One, materials submitted to departmental committee. Two, evaluation against state standards, documented alignment. Three, pedagogical effectiveness assessment. Four, diversity and inclusion evaluation. Five, public posting of approved materials with rationale. Six, annual review of implementation effectiveness. By April twentieth, five neighboring districts had requested consultation on implementing similar reforms. Alex, working with Doctor Rodriguez and the school board, developed a structured knowledge transfer process. One, policy documentation packages with implementation timelines. Two, administrative training modules with practical scenarios. Three, student and faculty involvement frameworks. Four, transparent reporting mechanism templates. Five. Evaluation metrics for measuring effectiveness. On May third, the most significant systemic change emerged when the state legislature introduced Bill S B three twenty seven, informally known as the Rivera Protection Act, establishing standardized administrative accountability requirements statewide. State Senator Maria Gonzalez cited Alex ' s case specifically during committee hearings. The systematic documentation maintained by Mister Rivera transformed an individual injustice into catalytic reform. This legislation ensures that administrative actions throughout our education system adhere to transparent equitable standards. By the academic year ' s end, Westridge High School had become a case study in institutional transformation. The student newspaper ' s final edition featured a data visualization tracking measurable improvements. Ninety-four percent reduction in reported microaggressions. One hundred percent compliance with administrative documentation requirements. Eighty-seven percent increase in faculty reporting feeling, secure in professional autonomy. Ninety-one percent of students reporting equitable treatment regardless of identity. The systemic changes had transformed not just policies but cultural norms. What began as one teacher ' s meticulous documentation had catalyzed a comprehensive reimagining of administrative accountability throughout the educational ecosystem. On September fifteenth of the following academic year, precisely three hundred nine days after being placed on administrative leave, Alex Rivera stood at the podium in the district ' s central administration building. The formal ceremony marked his installation as the newest member of the Westridge School Board, having won the special election to fill Gregory Phillips ' vacated seat with seventy-three point four percent of the vote. Educational excellence requires both academic rigor and administrative accountability, Alex stated in his acceptance speech. Today marks not a conclusion, but a continuation of our commitment to transparent, equitable educational governance. The audience included many who had become allies throughout his journey: Diane Lawson, now serving as curriculum director following Doctor Peterson ' s retirement; Carmen Bailey, recently accepted to Columbia University ' s prelaw program; and Ethan, whose unwavering support had provided a foundation throughout the turbulent process. The transformation in district operations was quantifiable. Doctor Rodriguez, now permanently appointed as Westridge High Principal, presented the first quarterly accountability report. Administrative A C T O N S Quarterly M E T R I C S. Total administrative observations, one hundred forty-seven. Observation distribution variance, three point two percent within statistical norms. Documentation compliance, one hundred percent. Policy reference accuracy, ninety-seven point eight percent. Faculty satisfaction index, ninety-two point six percent, forty-one point three percent increase Yowai. The Rivera documentation framework, as it had become known throughout the state education system, had been implemented in thirty-four districts across the state, with measurable improvements in administrative accountability metrics. Superintendent Harris summarized the institutional transformation during her introduction. What began as an injustice has catalyzed the most significant administrative reform in our district ' s history. Board member Rivera ' s systematic approach to documentation has become a blueprint for educational governance statewide. Alex ' s first official action as a board member was proposing the Educational Equity Accountability Act, establishing permanent structural protections. One, standardized documentation requirements for all administrative actions. Two, statistical monitoring for disparate treatment patterns. Three, protected reporting channels with non- retaliation guarantees. Four, regular external audits of administrative decision patterns. Five, mandatory implicit bias training for all administrative personnel. The proposal passed unanimously. After the ceremony, Officer Jenkins, now heading the district ' s newly formed procedural compliance department, approached Alex. When I watched you document everything that day in your classroom, I never imagined it would transform our entire system, Jenkins confessed. You ' ve shown us that systematic documentation isn ' t just protective, it ' s transformative. The State Education Department had formally adopted the Rivera framework as a recommended best practice, with implementation guidelines distributed to all one hundred fifty-seven districts. During his first board meeting, Alex addressed curriculum standards. Excellence and inclusivity are complementary, not competitive priorities, he stated, presenting achievement data from schools implementing comprehensive anti- discrimination policies. The evidence demonstrates that creating equitable learning environments correlates directly with improved academic outcomes. The statistical analysis was irrefutable. Schools with strong accountability systems showed measurable improvements across standardized metrics. One month into his tenure, Alex received a letter from a teacher in a neighboring district. Dear Board Member Rivera. Following your documentation framework allowed me to address discriminatory practices in my own school. The systematic approach transformed what could have been my dismissal into institutional reform. Your journey has created protection for countless educators and students who might otherwise have fought these battles alone. With gratitude. Michael Chen. The systemic reform had expanded beyond administrative procedures to curriculum development. Westridge ' s inclusive literature approach had produced the highest A P literature scores in district history, empirical evidence that inclusive content enhanced rather than detracted from academic excellence. On the one year anniversary of his administrative leave, Alex convened a community forum titled Documentation as Empowerment, teaching practical strategies for systematic recordkeeping as a tool against discrimination. Justice is rarely achieved through confrontation alone, Alex explained to the packed auditorium. Systematic documentation transforms individual grievances into irrefutable evidence patterns, shifting focus from personalities to policies. The forum became a monthly workshop, training hundreds of educators in documentation methods that provided protection against arbitrary administrative actions. As the academic year progressed, Alex ' s influence extended to state policy development. The legislature ' s education committee invited him to consult on S B five twelve, establishing statewide standards for administrative accountability. The full circle journey reached its most meaningful milestone when Westridge High School ' s graduation ceremony included a student speaker who shared her experience. As a queer student, seeing Mister Rivera ' s journey from targeted teacher to school board leader showed me that systems can change when confronted with irrefutable evidence and strategic response. His example taught me more about justice than any textbook ever could. The systematic change Alex had initiated continued to expand, creating ripple effects throughout the educational system. What began as personal documentation for self- protection had transformed into institutional reform, creating protected space for countless others who might otherwise have faced similar discrimination without recourse. As he reviewed quarterly compliance reports in his board office, Alex reflected on the journey ' s most significant lesson. True change required not just moral conviction but methodical documentation, strategic alliance building, and unwavering commitment to systemic rather than merely personal justice.